Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for May 13th, 2024. We have a motion and executive session to discuss the employment history of particular pedagogical employees and matters made confidential under federal law FERPA.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We have a motion go back into public session.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. All right, thank you guys. Good evening, welcome to the Yorktown Central School District Board of Education meeting for May 13th, 2024. Could please stand for the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence for armed forces and those in our community that have lost loved ones, especially the father of Gina Fasolongo, the father-in-law of Daniel Fasolongo, the father-in-law of Robert Stasko.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, united, indivisible, every being, and every essence of all.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for waiting. We were a few seconds late. We're beginning our three favorite meetings of the year, aren't we?
Yes.
So we're going to turn it over to your on.
I am going to make my way to the podium to begin the evening. Excuse me. Thank you all for joining us this evening. What a special night to celebrate. Our colleagues, our loved ones, family, friends. Before we begin this evening, this is always one of my favorite nights. We celebrate some of the great work in our classrooms, in our school buildings, in our offices. And before we begin the official recognition of our honorees this evening, I'd like to begin the program with our middle school jazz band led by Mr. Nathan Childers. Mr. Childers, thank you so much for being here this evening. Students, thank you so much for being here. We are looking forward to hearing your play. Thank you.
(applause)
Mr. Childers, students, thank you again for being here tonight. We appreciate your performance. That was absolutely amazing. For those who don't know, Mr. Childers, I just want to share what a talented musician, not just a talented teacher, who was sitting in this chair where many of the tenure honorees were not too long ago. Mr. Childers was recently recognized for tenure, but he's also an incredible musician. He's performed, and I'm not sure that Mr. Childers wants me to share all of this information, being as humble as he is, but he has performed with Aretha Franklin, he has performed with The Temptations, Frankie Valli, if anyone is familiar with America's Got Talent, Michael Grimm. He's performed with Taylor Hicks, American Idol winner. He's performed on Broadway, Come Fly With Me, Hunka Hunka Burnin' Love, Kinky Boots, Memphis, Best Is Yet To Come, Wedding Singer. Mr. Childers is quite the accomplished musician. He holds clinics all over the country, just one of the most talented musicians and talented teachers. Mr. Childers, thank you for being here this evening. Students, thank you. And now, students, it's going to be a long meeting. I'm sure you have homework. I'm sure you have to get ready for tomorrow, so you're welcome to depart through the side door. You're welcome to stay, but have a good evening if you depart. So this is such a special night. This is a night that the board, my colleagues from central administration and I like to take to acknowledge some really, really hard work and dedication that's been invested. So first of all, congratulations to all of our colleagues being honored for tenure this evening. This is one step in a long journey, and we recognize all that you have invested to get to this point. And as we look at the tenure process, what I'll tell you is it's a rigorous one. And I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge my colleagues from each of our schools here this evening. I see all of our school principals, assistant principals here tonight, so I'd like to acknowledge and thank you all for being here because you are a large part of the journey that each of our teachers have taken to get here. It's a four-year probationary period, three if you were tenured in a previous New York State school district. There are 12 formal observations that take part, but in addition to that, there are dozens of informal pop-ins. For the probation, and I see some probationary teachers here not yet in their tenure years sitting in the audience, just think about how many times already I've stopped into your classrooms. Those are all part of the assessment process. There are annual summative evaluations. We look at your broader contributions to our school community. How do you make us better beyond the work in the classroom? And we look at your professional growth and the path that you're on. Tenure should not be the pinnacle. It shouldn't be the peak of the mountain. It's a step along the way to a long, great career, and we look forward to continuing to improve. I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the families of the tenure recipients here this evening. When you have a teacher in your family, you know what you've signed up for. There's a lot that goes in to having a teacher in the family, whether it's commandeering the dining room table during report card time to lay out all of your student records and student files, or whether it's just certain busy points in the year where you don't see your loved one as often as you'd like to. That's the reality, and we thank you for not just standing by the people you love during their professional journey in our district, but for propping them up at times when they need it. It's not easy work. Any teacher in the audience knows, it's complex work, and you need a support system around you to do it well. Thank you for being that support system to our teachers, your loved ones. So for the tenure recipients, you're going to get a lot of applause tonight. I'd like us to give a round of applause to your families. Thank you to colleagues. I see so many colleagues from the buildings here, and it's so great to see you. Many of you received tenure a long time ago, yet you still continue to excel and get better each and every year and each and every day. That's a testament to who you are and what a special educator each of you are. You take new teachers under your wing. You don't have to do it, but you do, and it's so great that you do. We're the better for it. Your colleagues are the better for it. Whether you served as a formal mentor or as an informal mentor, thank you. Whether you were the person who, I see a beautiful baby in the back clapping at the end, and that's just so terrific. Whether you were the person who was appointed as the official mentor or whether you're their go-to person. They ask you, gee, how would you respond in this situation? I got an email that I'm not sure about. Dr. Hatter sent me an email. He wants to meet. What do you think it's about? Or any of the other types of emails or situations that you find yourself in. You lean on your colleagues. You lean on the assistant principal and principals in our district, the central office admins, and everybody around you. So colleagues, I want to take a moment to give you all a round of applause for helping. So we're at the point now, and I'm going to try to keep it brief. I do have 17 pages worth of notes, and I haven't looked down yet. So we're going to try to move things relatively quickly, but we want to take our time to celebrate each and every one of you. So to my colleagues who are being recommended for tenure tonight, you got a really long, detailed email from me in terms of the flow for the evening. We're going to begin that today. So this is part of the assessment. Before I recommend you for tenure, let's see if we are able to follow that email directions. There was a whole page of email directions. What I will tell you, if you're visiting us from any other district, things are different here in Yorktown. I hear that from everyone with whom I've spoken, especially some of the tenure candidates here tonight. I've hired each one of you, every one of you I've hired. You sat at the head of the table in my conference room. You may or may not remember the intensity of that interview. We talked about several things. We talked about respecting children. We talked about respecting our district, our brand, that why that we wear so proudly. And then we talked about some other technical parts of the job. But one of the things I shared with you is it's different here. I can't describe it. You probably can't either. It's just different. It's a special, special place. And it's a special, special place because of the great families in our community, great children that we get to work with each day, and you. You make it a special place to come to work each day. You make it a special place to come to learn. So I'm going to be recommending, we're going to go through each of our schools and each of our respective faculty members, and you will now have that tenure designation next to your name, assuming the board accepts my recommendation tonight. I'm going to make that assumption. You'll join something very special, something that's bigger than any one individual, something that is so powerful when harnessed and working together. So at this point, I'd like to invite, to start, I'd like to invite Brookside Principal Mr. Cassarini to the stage with me as we begin to call up the Brookside faculty and staff being recognized this evening. I'd also like to invite the district PTSA president, Mr. Ron Fideli, to the stage as well. We have such a close relationship with our PTSA, and I think it's just so fitting that they join us on stage right to my left and acknowledge our tenure recipients. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the four candidates from Brookside School who are being recommended for tenure this evening to the stage. Cesar Brahimie, Joanne Toscano, Ashley Castoro, and Brianna McGarvey. So I'm going to ask you to give them some quick questions. Cesar, come on over. Perfect. To our board, I am pleased to recommend Ms. Cesar Brahimie for tenure as a certified teaching assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. Ms. Brahimie has been a certified teaching assistant at Brookside since 2020, September of 2020. Her assignment for the last two years has been in a special education 1212 class as the program aide. She was assigned this role for a variety of reasons, but especially for her leadership. She's described as kind, caring, intelligent, showing initiative, child-centered, creative, and intuitive, and she adds tremendous value to the Brookside community. In the words of our Brookside School Principal, Mr. Cassarini, I quote, "She works so hard because she genuinely wants the best outcomes for children. She is the first to volunteer for challenging tasks, from learning a new curriculum to implementing a behavior intervention plan for a student," end quote. We are deeply appreciative to have Ms. Brahimie in the district, and it's with great pleasure that I recommend her for tenure as a CTA in the Yorktown Central School District this evening. I am pleased to recommend Ms. Joanne Toscano for tenure as a certified teaching assistant in the Yorktown Central School District. Ms. Toscano joined the Brookside staff in December of 2019 and spent her first two years helping the building navigate through the challenging pandemic circumstances. Ms. Toscano has taken on a variety of responsibilities and assignments since arriving at Brookside. Two years ago, she served as an aide in a special education 1212 class, and since last year, she's been assigned as a one-to-one teaching assistant for a student. And in both roles, in the words of Mr. Cassarini, she performed with skill, compassion, compassion, and with a nurturing demeanor that is so essential for students. I'm delighted to recommend Ms. Toscano for tenure without reservation. All right, Ashley. Is the baby here? Yeah. She was one clapping. I just asked Ashley if the baby was here. I've seen pictures. I feel like I know the baby already. I'm pleased to recommend Ms. Ashley Castoro for tenure as a special education teacher in the Yorktown Central School District. Ms. Castoro joined the Brookside faculty as a special education teacher in September of 2021. She previously served as a special education teacher with the New York City Department of Education. Ms. Castoro has a variety of teaching certifications for different elementary age levels in both special and general education, and has used all of her education in her professional endeavors. During her time at Brookside, she served as a grade-two special education teacher in an integrated co-teacher classroom. In the words of Brookside School Principal, Mr. Cassarini, I quote, "Throughout her career in the Yorktown Central School District, she has established a strong collegial relationship with the co-teacher with whom she has worked for the last three years. She has built relationships with parents and has identified the needs of a diverse array of students," end quote. Having often visited Ms. Castoro's class, I can affirm that she and her co-teacher have established and maintained a strong learning culture that places the needs of the students at the forefront of everything they do. It's with great pleasure that I recommend Ms. Castoro for tenure this evening in the Yorktown Central School District." The next candidate being recommended for tenure is actually not an unfamiliar face to our board. Ms. McGarvey's class delivered the good news at our last Board of Education meeting on the writing process, and they really, really impressed. And so this evening, I am delighted to recommend Ms. Brianna McGarvey for tenure as an elementary education teacher in the Yorktown Central School District. Ms. McGarvey joined the Brookside faculty in September of 2021, having previously worked in a variety of general education roles at the Spite and Dival School in the Bronx. There, she served as a general education teacher, integrated co-teacher, and teacher of gifted and talented. Ms. McGarvey has brought all of her previous pedagogical and leadership skills to our district and has flourished throughout. She's not just an incredible teacher, but she's also been involved in activities beyond the classroom, including curriculum development as a member of our ELA task force. Again quoting Mr. Cassarini, and it's important for me that you hear the words of the school principal who works with each teacher day in and day out. It's important for me that you hear the words of our school principals and my recommendation. So in the words of Mr. Cassarini, I quote, "Ms. McGarvey is passionate about teaching, pedagogy, and curriculum. She has a very professional and collegial demeanor, and is a pleasure to work with her colleagues and myself," end quote. I have no doubt that Ms. McGarvey will continue to be a leader within our school district for many years to come, and I'm honored to recommend her for tenure this evening.
Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Congratulations.
At this time, we'll recognize our colleagues from Crumpon School who are being recommended for tenure this evening. I'd like to invite Crumpon School Principal Ms. Jennifer Jacobs to the stage to join me this evening, and I'd also like to invite up Ms. Michelle McDonald, Ellen McRaele, and Nick Tuosto. in the Yorktown Central School District. Ms. McDonald consistently demonstrates dedication, compassion, and commitment to the well-being and success of students. She has been an important part of Crumpon. Ms. McDonald has shown exceptional versatility and adaptability in working with diverse groups of students in her fifth-grade classroom as well as during recess and lunch. She supports classroom instruction and fosters a positive learning environment. And in the words of Ms. Jacobs and Mr. Curran, "In the classroom, Ms. McDonald forges meaningful connections with students, earning their trust and respect while providing them with the guidance and encouragement they need to succeed academically and socially. She goes above and beyond to ensure that every student feels valued and supported, fostering a sense of belonging that is essential for their overall growth and development." I think that sums it up perfectly, and I'm honored to recommend Ms. McDonald for tenure as a certified teaching assistant. I am confident that she'll continue to make significant contributions to the success of our students and our school community. Congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you. Thank you.
I am delighted to recommend Ms. Ellen McRaele for tenure as an elementary school teacher in the Yorktown Central School District. Ms. McRaele is currently serving as a general education teacher in our Crumpon School. Ms. McRaele has demonstrated a remarkable ability to engage students and foster a love of learning that extends beyond the classroom. She employs a variety of innovative teaching strategies and methodologies to meet the diverse needs of students in her classes. Her patient approach to teaching and learning ensures that every child receives the attention and support necessary to thrive. Her classroom is a dynamic and inclusive environment where students are encouraged to explore, question, and discover. Ms. McRaele has shown a deep commitment to the personal development of each of her students. She goes above and beyond to address the individual needs of each child, whether it be through additional support, teaching points, or compliments, or even parent contact. Her genuine care and concern for students' well-being have made a significant difference. And in the words of Crumpon Principal Ms. Jacobs, "Ms. McRaele is an invaluable asset to our faculty. Her willingness to share insights, collaborate with colleagues, and contribute to professional development initiatives has elevated the teaching practice within our school," end quote. I am confident that Ms. McRaele will continue to make a significant impact on our school community, and I recommend her for tenure without reservation. Congratulations. Nick, come on over. I know Nick's an avid hockey player. I don't know why the Rangers would schedule a game on the night of tenure night. We scheduled this before they scheduled their playoff game, so they should have moved their game. But I'm honored to recommend Mr. Tuosto for tenure in the Yorktown Central School District. He has worked as a classroom teacher at Crumpon Elementary School for the last three years. I've had the privilege of observing Mr. Tuosto's teaching and have been genuinely impressed by what I've observed. His lessons are dynamic, engaging, and accessible to all students. Mr. Tuosto's classroom learning environment is an inclusive one, where each child's encouraged to work to their fullest potential and continue to grow as learners. Beyond the instructional process, Mr. Tuosto has shown a deep commitment to the personal development of all students. He consistently goes above and beyond to address individual student needs, no matter the format. He has a genuine care and concern for each student who enters his classroom. In the words of- [inaudible] I do have 17 pages worth of notes, and I haven't looked down yet. So we're going to try to move things relatively quickly, but we want to take our time to celebrate each and every one of you. So to my colleagues who are being recommended for tenure tonight, you got a really long, detailed email from me in terms of the flow for the evening. So this is part of the assessment. Before I recommend you for tenure, let's see if we are able to follow that email directions. There was a whole page of email directions. What I will tell you, if you're visiting us from any other district, things are different here in Yorktown. I hear that from everyone with whom I've spoken, especially some of the tenure candidates In the words of Ms. Jacobs, "Mr. Tuosto is such an important part of the school district. He's a leader in curriculum development and integrating cross-disciplinary approaches that have enriched our educational offerings. His willingness to share insights, collaborate with colleagues, and contribute to our work has made us all better," end quote. I am confident that Mr. Tuosto will continue to make a significant impact on our school community, and I am just so delighted to recommend him for tenure this evening. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Nick. Great job. Same here. Congratulations. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to invite Mildred E. Strang Middle School Principal, Ms. Marie Horowitz, to the stage. And joining Ms. Horowitz, I'd like to invite Ms. Janet Morrison, Dawn Palomara, Krista Patritas, and Brandon Traeger. I am pleased to recommend Ms. Janet Morrison for tenure as a music teacher in the Yorktown Central School District. Ms. Morrison has consistently created a safe and challenging learning environment for orchestra students at both Crampon and at the middle school. Mildred E. Strang Middle School Principal, Ms. Marie Horowitz, states that Ms. Morrison shares her love of music and has a commitment to developing strong musicians. Ms. Morrison maintains a fine rapport with her colleagues and building administrators. She also is very positive in her approach to working with students, end quote. Ms. Morrison has played an enormous role in increasing the numbers of students in our orchestral program, from 115 students across grades five through seven in 2020 to 184 students across those same grades in 2023. It's amazing. Ms. Morrison chooses pieces using student input, in which students have the opportunity to vote on which piece they would like to play for an upcoming concert. She started an after-school chamber orchestra group, and over the last two years, the Chamber Orchestra has done some really wonderful things, including playing holiday music for staff and students upon arrival the day prior to the December recess. Last year, they also, in addition to playing at the May Concert, the Chamber Orchestra played at our Board of Education meeting. Ms. Morrison took the NISM Ajudicator training and has been adjudicating NISM A festivals for the past two years, which provides her not only greater opportunities to meet and share with other music educators, but it also creates great exposure for our students. And this year, we sent more than 20 students across grades five through seven to the NISM A solo festival last month. I am so pleased and delighted to recommend Ms. Morrison for tenure as a music teacher in the Yorktown Central School District. I'm certain that she will continue to be a tremendous asset to our school community. Congratulations. I am so delighted to recommend Ms. Dawn Palomara for tenure as an elementary general education teacher in our district, although at the middle school, Ms. Palomara is currently teaching our sixth-grade science program. In the words of ME-SMS Principal, Ms. Marie Horowitz, Dawn has demonstrated the personal and professional qualifications, as well as the effectiveness and dedication as a grade-six teacher who specializes in science. Ms. Palomara's classroom environment is positive, respectful, and supportive. Students work in small groups or independently on age-appropriate projects with individualized support provided by a highly skilled teacher. Ms. Palomara's teaching style encourages students to explore and to apply the concepts presented in the lesson. Ms. Palomara shares her love of science with her students and collaboratively plans units and lessons with her colleagues. I had the privilege of observing one of Ms. Palomara's classes, and I broke the cardinal rule of observations. I stopped writing because I was so engaged with the lesson that I was watching, and I was so curious to see what happened with the outcome, that I stopped taking notes. I was too engaged to continue taking notes. So I know for sure that Ms. Palomara is worthy of being recommended for tenure, and I know for sure that she'll continue to do great things for our students and for our district. Congratulations, Dawn. It is a great pleasure that I recommend Ms. Krista Patritas for tenure, as she completes her third year of her probationary period as a reading teacher. Ms. Patritas has consistently created a supportive and challenging learning environment for the students of ME-SMS. As reading and AIS teacher, she works tirelessly on behalf of her students so that they may gain the necessary skills to be successful in all of their classes. Mrs. Horowitz says of Ms. Patritas that she helps her students to meet their academic and social-emotional needs by supporting children in understanding how they learn best. Ms. Patritas has shown, as students do, learning style inventories, as well as reading surveys. She helps students to develop SMART goals for every quarter, understand their 504 IEP, understand their STAR scores, and how this impacts the way they learn, end quote. Even after students have exited her program, Ms. Patritas continues to check in, meeting with students as needed. She utilizes her preparation periods and lunch to provide academic support for students. And what I observed in the classroom that I visited was nothing short of remarkable. Five students working on something incredibly challenging and incredibly reflective, and I was just so impressed. Ms. Patritas communicates with teachers, teams, with parents, to provide this 360-degree approach to student support. It's my pleasure to recommend her for tenure this evening. I'm confident that she'll continue to grow and flourish in our school district. Congratulations, Krista. Brandon? This evening, I am just delighted to recommend Mr. Brandon Traeger for tenure, as he completes his probationary period as a health education teacher in the Yorktown Central School District. Mr. Traeger has consistently created a rigorous yet safe learning environment for his students. He's focused, flexible, and offers excellent instruction that's based on the needs and strengths of his students. He also has a remarkable ability to connect with students. Mr. Traeger is able to use relatable examples in his instruction, resulting in a more engaging learning experience for students. Mr. Traeger engages all students in higher-order thinking through questioning, discussion, collaboration, and critique. Some of the accomplishments that Ms. Horowitz noted is that Mr. Traeger started an ME-SMS health portfolio, where students created a Google site that encompasses all of their work from health class, grade six through eight. He created a sixth-grade advocacy project, where students pick a topic that they wanted to elaborate on from the quarter and create an advocacy project on that topic. There were so many guest speakers and other opportunities that Mr. Traeger has organized beyond the classroom instruction. And in addition to his role in the classroom, Mr. Traeger has taken on multiple coaching roles in our high school athletics program, proving to be an asset to the broader school community even beyond the middle school. And there may even be a future in broadcasting after what I heard on the last lacrosse game. Nope, flag football, flag football game. Mr. Traeger has demonstrated a strong work ethic, creativity, and commitment to the success of students. I'm honored to recommend him for tenure this evening. I'm confident he'll continue to grow and flourish in our school district. Congratulations, Brandon. Mr. Joe DiGennaro. And to accompany Mr. DiGennaro, I'd like to invite Ms. Linda Servone, Mr. William Ficker, Mr. John Chapisci, and Ms. Lauren Suho Adamo. It's with great pleasure that I recommend Ms. Linda Servone to be granted tenure in the Yorktown Central School District in the area of mathematics. Ms. Servone joined the district in September of 2020. During her time in the Yorktown Central School District, she has successfully taught a wide range of math levels, including Math 12, college algebra, geometry, and Math 1. And having observed Ms. Servone, I found her teaching style to be engaging, rigorous, and using multiple pedagogical strategies, all while demonstrating a kind, nurturing, and supportive environment for her students. I found the examples that she used to be engaging, to be relatable, and enjoyable. In the words of Yorktown High School Principal, Mr. DiGennaro, "Ms. Servone is always seeking ways to expand her knowledge, grow professionally, and further support her students and their families. Ms. Servone is always open to feedback to improve her skill set as well," end quote. Ms. Servone has been a wonderful addition to Yorktown High School, and I look forward to her continued professional growth, and I'm delighted to recommend her for tenure this evening. Congratulations, Linda. It is a great pleasure that I recommend Mr. William Ficker be granted tenure as a social studies teacher in the Yorktown Central School District. Mr. Ficker was hired in September of 2021 and was able to make an immediate impact on his department and his school. I've observed Mr. Ficker formally, and I could attest that he is a thoughtful educator who carefully prepares lessons to ensure students receive the highest quality of instruction. He's taught a variety of courses in the department, and this year, he's teaching multiple sections of Social Studies 9 and 11. Yorktown High School Principal, Mr. DiGennaro, says of Mr. Ficker, "His lessons are prepared with detail, rigor, and with multiple learners in mind, while presenting material with a high level of energy and enthusiasm. His rapport with students, their parents, and colleagues are terrific. Daily, he goes beyond for his students. He's an outstanding colleague and a consummate professional," end quote. Mr. Ficker's growth has been evident as a teacher, and I'm confident that his professional growth will continue. I'm delighted to recommend him for tenure this evening. Congratulations. So one of our tenure honorees is not here this evening, and he is out in Los Angeles at the International Science and Engineering Fair with one of our students, because one of the students in his program qualified for a very prestigious, very prestigious competition that's being held out on the West Coast. So Mr. Rubio can't be here this evening, but I do want to just acknowledge all of the great work that he has done for our school district. So I just want to take a moment to just also formally recommend Mr. Rubio to the board for their consideration this evening. He was hired in September of 2020, and he joined us with experience leading a science research program, and he used that experience to take our program to the next level. Mr. DiGennaro said it well in his tenure recommendation of Mr. Rubio, and I quote, "In his first year, he co-directed our program, but by year two, he was completely directing the program. The growth of our program has been impressive to observe. The number of students has increased, and so has the success of our entire program, as numerous awards have been collected. Mr. Rubio's skills are many, and his leadership is tremendous. There are so many parts of his role to balance, and he makes it look easy, and he's highly effective at the same time. Mr. Rubio works closely with so many constituent groups, including parents, science mentors, students, competition leaders, faculty administrators, and staff. He's continually looking to improve his practice while increasing his depth of knowledge." That sums it up pretty well in terms of a recommendation for Mr. Rubio. I'm honored and proud to recommend Mr. Paul Rubio for tenure to the board this evening. I am pleased to recommend Mr. John Chapisci for tenure as a world language teacher in the Yorktown Central School District. Mr. Chapisci was hired in September of 2021, holding teaching certificates in Spanish and French. He's a thoughtful, dynamic educator who's taught a variety of courses within the department. He's incredibly hardworking and willing to teach multiple languages at multiple levels. In the words of Mr. DiGennaro, "Mr. Chapisci is compassionate, professional, kind, and has an outstanding demeanor, excellent rapport with students, their parents, colleagues, and daily, he goes above and beyond for his students. He's an outstanding colleague and a terrific professional," end quote. Outside of the classroom, Mr. Chapisci has taken on the task of leading Yorktown High School's SAT-ACT test program, which is no easy task, by the way. The amount of time that has to be invested to coordinate staffing and accommodations on testing and to collaborate with the college board and to oversee the actual day-to-day of test day on a Saturday is impressive. But as with any of the other responsibilities that Mr. Chapisci has assumed, he's exceeded our expectations. And that's why, for that reason, for so many reasons, I'm delighted to recommend Mr. Chapisci for tenure this evening. I look forward to his continued growth and many contributions to our district in the years to come. Congratulations, John. Technical difficulty. It was bound to happen tonight. Uh-oh, I heard. That's great. I was thinking it, but I'm glad the baby said it. And I will. But I wrote these beautiful words, and I want to share them. Okay, here we go. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Ms. Lauren Suho to be granted tenure in the Yorktown Central School District based on her overall teaching performance and all of her contributions to our district in the area of English. Ms. Suho joined the Yorktown High School faculty in September of 2021 with a very impressive background. She was previously tenured in another local school district, and her teaching assignment has been so varied. I had the opportunity to observe Ms. Suho's class recently, and what I saw was nothing short of remarkable. The Socratic seminar that she facilitated gave every child a voice, gave every child the opportunity and space to share their own perspective, and it was so skillfully done. In fact, it was one of the most impressive lessons that I've witnessed in my career. And I think that sums it up pretty well, but there's more. Her willingness to advise our literary magazine, Supstone, has increased contributors in all facets. It's improved the And that's why, for that reason, for so many reasons, I'm delighted to recommend Mr. Shapici for tenure this evening. I look forward to his continued growth and many contributions to our district in the years to come. Congratulations, John. Technical difficulty. It was bound to happen tonight. Uh-oh, I heard. That's great. I was thinking it, but I'm glad the baby said it. And I will. But I wrote these beautiful words, and I want to share them. Okay, here we go. It is with great pleasure that I recommend Ms. Lauren Suho to be granted tenure in the Yorktown Central School District based on her overall teaching performance and all of her contributions to our district in the area of English. Ms. Suho joined the Yorktown High School faculty in September of 2021 with a very impressive background. She was previously tenured in another local school district, and her teaching assignment has been so varied. I had the opportunity to observe Ms. Suho's class recently, and what I saw was nothing short of remarkable. The Socratic seminar that she facilitated gave every child a voice, gave every child the opportunity and space to share their own perspective, and it was so skillfully done. In fact, it was one of the most impressive lessons that I've witnessed in my career. And I think that sums it up pretty well, but there's more. Her willingness to advise our literary magazine, Supestone, has increased contributors in all facets, it's improved the presence of the publication in our learning community, and it's garnered awards. And in the words of Mr. DiGennaro, quote, "I have found her classroom engaging, rigorous, and utilizing multiple teaching strategies. She's always kind and compassionate to her students, and she creates a positive learning environment that's welcoming to all students. She designs dynamic lessons that are detailed and maximizes every second of the instructional period. She always strives for excellence." I am just so delighted and honored to recommend Ms. Suho for tenure this evening. I am so confident that she'll continue to do great things for our school district. Congratulations, Lauren.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
This time, I've invited Ms. Ammerling to join me on the podium as we recognize our final honoree of the evening. I'd like to invite Mr. Christopher Miller to the stage. It is, and I'm sharing a lot of the recommendation that Mrs. Ammerling wrote, and I'll share, obviously, some of my own thoughts as well, and those will be intermixed, just like every other tenure recommendation, was a combination of thoughts of the school principal and my own. It is with great pleasure and without reservation that I recommend Mr. Christopher Miller for tenure in the Yorktown Central School District. Mr. Miller has been serving in the role of supervisor of STEM K-12 for the last three years. This leadership role was established in the 21-22 school year, and Mr. Miller has gone above and beyond in developing the role and responsibilities. There are too many items to list to speak about the contributions that Mr. Miller has made to our school district. I can name a few, but that will do no justice to the impact that Mr. Miller has had on our district, and he works very closely in the curriculum office with Ms. Ammerling. Some of the items that I wish to recognize this evening are his role in the oversight and the implementation of Intumath as our primary resource in grades K-8, including the ongoing support that's provided, the vertical and horizontal alignment of our curricula, the publication of curricula maps to our website, the development of so many other curricula specifically in computer science and digital fluency, the development of an MTS plan, MTSS plan, and his role in that development, the planning and implementation that has gone into new computer-based testing, and so many other aspects of curriculum and instruction. One of the things that we may or may not know is Mr. Miller's role in our safety and security protocols in the district. I rely heavily on Mr. Miller's input for matters pertaining to safety, and he goes above and beyond because that's reflective of who Mr. Miller is. It's whatever you need, plug me in, I'm happy to help. And that's been the experience that I have had, that's been the experience, I believe, that his colleagues in the buildings and in district office have had. And I say thank you to Mr. Miller for all of the invaluable contributions he's made. He's been a very close advisor to me on so many different areas, and I appreciate his counsel, his foresight, and just the honesty that he demonstrates with me day in and day out, and with Mrs. Ammerling as well. I'm confident that Mr. Miller will continue to grow and flourish in this role, and I am just delighted and honored to recommend him for tenure this evening. Congratulations, Chris.
Congratulations, Coach.
How about one more round of applause for all? To, just a quick word to the principals, thank you so much for thoughtfully preparing these tenure recommendations, your words, your insights. I just, I can't thank our school principals and our assistant principals, but I do want to acknowledge the five principals we have, and I do want to acknowledge our assistant principals. Thank you so much for your contributions to not only the mentorship, but to the remarks. Many of the remarks that I prepared this evening are just a combination, again, of your thoughts, my thoughts, and I appreciate that partnership. I also want to take a moment to thank again Mr. Fideli and Ms. Lisa Buglo, who's here representing the district PTSA. The partnership that we have with our district PTSA is a really special one. We meet every month, the PTA heads and Ms. Ammerling and I and Ms. Bost is a representative of the board, we meet every month, and we collaborate, we work through questions, different topics that we have, and I thought it was so fitting to have Mr. Fideli, our PTA president, district PTSA president, onstage joining us to celebrate our tenure recipients this evening. And families, I said it at the beginning, I'm going to end with this before I turn it over to the board for the most important part of the night, which is their vote on your tenure. I said this to you when you came in, and I'll say it to you again, it's just different here. It's a special, special place, and for our staff who are being recommended for tenure, I look forward to you continuing your career. This is so special because it's so hard to get here. Not everybody gets to where you are tonight. You know that. You got here because of the hard work and commitment that you've demonstrated to our students. And so this is not, like I said earlier, the top of the mountain. This is not the pinnacle of your career. It's not the highlight. It's a step. It's an important step, but it's a step. But it's a really special step because you've invested so much to get to this point, and I am just so proud of you, each and every one of you. I am just so proud of you. Job well done. And at this point, I'm going to turn it over to our board president, Ms. Carbone. Good luck, I hope it goes your way.
Can I have a point of order, please?
Sure.
Okay. Can I have a motion upon recommendation of the superintendent that the following be approved, and it is all the tenure candidates that we heard tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations.
Okay, so at this point, we have a whole meeting ahead of us. We're going to take a brief five-minute intermission that will allow you to exit if you choose to exit tonight. Thank you so much for being here, we really appreciate you joining us for this special night, have a terrific evening.
Thank you, that was a wonderful night. We are going to move on to our public hearing, so can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And this is for the presentation of our 24-25 budget, so we're on, I'm going to turn it back over to you again.
So this is our budget hearing evening, as required under law, and I'm going to ask Ms. Sanfilippo to give just a brief overview of some of the important numbers that are related to this year's budget, specifically with regard to the budget-to-budget increase as well as the estimated or anticipated tax rate increase. I also do want to, prior to Ms. Sanfilippo sharing that information, I do want to call the community's attention to two budget presentations that Ms. Sanfilippo and I will be delivering, both virtual. We try to get an evening and a day presentation during the week, so Wednesday, May 15th, at 6:00 p.m., we'll be hosting a live virtual budget presentation, and then Friday, May 17th, at 10:00 a.m., we'll be hosting another live virtual presentation. The links will be available on our website the morning of, and we'll also email them out, we'll blast them out to the community as well. It's an opportunity to, again, hear our budget presentation. There won't be any new information shared during that meeting, but if you had any questions or if there was something that maybe you wanted to hear again, you're welcome to attend either the Wednesday or Friday presentation. Both presentations will be the same, so you may want to choose to attend one or the other, you're welcome, obviously, to attend both. Everything that we'll be sharing has been posted to our website, all of the budget information, all of the previous budget presentations are on our website, available for the community to review, to question, to ask further, inquire further upon. You can email me, you can email Ms. Sanfilippo, we're happy to answer those questions for you. And as a reminder, the budget vote is Tuesday, May 21st, Tuesday, from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. at French Hill School. So I wanted to share those quick updates with regard to the upcoming presentations, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Sanfilippo for some of the important budget detail.
Thank you very much. So for the 24-25 school year, the proposed budget is a total of $119,110,000. That is a 2.97% increase over the current year budget. The tax levy increase is 2.07%, which is tax cap compliant, so we are in compliance with the New York State property tax cap. That will translate into an estimated tax rate increase for the town of Yorktown, 2.07%. For the town of Cortland, .02%. And the town of Newcastle is estimated at 2.95%. Again, these are estimates, and the actual tax rate increases may vary based on several other factors. We are also, this budget includes planned use of reserve funds. We are planning on using $500,000 from each the Reserve for Employees Retirement System and the Reserve for Teachers Retirement System for a total of $1 million. We are also planning on using an additional $1.2 million in appropriated fund balance from our unreserved and undesignated fund balance. I think that's it in terms of the numbers.
Thank you. So if there are any questions, we're happy to discuss those, but I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. Does the board have any questions? Then I'm going to open it up to any public comment. We have none? Okay. So I'm just going to read the propositions that they're going, as they will appear on the ballot. Proposition 1, Budget, shall the annual school budget for the fiscal year 24-25 in the amount of $119,110,000 and the requisite portion thereof be raised by taxation on the taxable property in the district be approved? And for members of the Board of Education, you vote for two, there are two vacancies, and they are Jackie Carbone and Peter Bisaccia. If there's no comments and no public comment, can I have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're up to public comment number one. Has anybody signed up? No? So we're going to go on to the superintendent's update. Lauren?
So just, again, our tenure recognition ceremony was this evening, and it was lovely, it was so wonderful to honor all of the colleagues who were recommended for tenure. The school budget vote, the only update that I have, was actually subsumed within the budget hearing, which are two virtual presentations that I shared previously on Wednesday, May 17th, in the evening, and then Friday at 10:00 a.m., May 19th. They're virtual. Please join, please listen in. The session should not take more than 45 minutes for the entire presentation, so if you have the opportunity to stop online, you're welcome to do so. If you have any questions, there'll be an opportunity for you to ask those questions. Everything is posted to our website, in the spirit of transparency, we want you to have all of the information that we have on the budget, including the line-by-line, all of the presentations, the presentations with context to them, so not just the slide presentation, but also our narration of the presentation as well. So you can stop onto our website, there's a banner at the top of the website that provides you with a link to our budget page, and all of the documentation is there for your review. There are some wonderful additions being planned for the 24-25 school year, including an offering of ASL, American Sign Language, in our program, looking at reducing some class sizes in our elementary schools with the addition of a kindergarten and third-grade position at Brookside, second-grade position at Mohansick, obviously looking to make some security and network upgrades, and we have some other just really wonderful things such as modified sports that we're looking to introduce, three sports for the 24-25 school year, boys volleyball, girls field hockey, and boys and girls cross-country. And I'm especially looking forward to the boys and girls cross-country team because that's a high-participation sport where we can field a large team and get a lot of students involved, although I'm not sure how involved the students will remain once they realize that two, five, and eight-mile runs are part of the norm in terms of practice, but it should be an enjoyable opportunity for our school district. And I think that's been one of the hallmarks of our school district with each budget. This was a very difficult budget to put together. I first became an assistant superintendent for curriculum and instruction in 2010, which was the year prior to the tax cap being imposed, and that was a very challenging budget to construct because at the time, contracts were not built for a tax cap, nor was so many of the other expenditures and agreements that school districts had. But I would say that this was probably the second most challenging budget because there were so many variables that were pressing on our budget with regard to ERS and TRS and health insurance and some of the other unfunded and underfunded mandates, but yet, in spite of that, we were able to stay within the tax cap, deliver a really, really responsible budget that's sensitive to our taxpayers while continuing to expand some wonderful offerings for our students. We'll continue our UPK program, our Universal Pre-Kindergarten Program, for the 24-25 school year. We have 188 seats that are allotted to us at this point. We have about 55 seats remaining, so if you know someone who has a child who will be four years of age on or before December 1st, 2024, please encourage them, sign up. We need to know what our numbers are so that we can plan sections and teaching staff and support staff. Same thing with kindergarten, there's a rolling enrollment. However, we do encourage families to sign up sooner rather than later. If you have a child who's turning five by December 1st of 2024, please sign up, register your child for kindergarten. That is so important for our budgetary planning with regard to not just the class section, but teaching assistance in the room, phys ed, art, music, library, all these special areas that kindergarten sections have. So please register for pre-K or kindergarten if you'd like. We look forward to, we look forward to your child coming to our district in whatever capacity, whether it's as a pre-kindergartner or as a kindergarten student. And again, our spring season, just to share a couple of upcoming dates, our spring athletic season is winding down, our teams are having just incredible, incredible runs, our flag football team continues to really inspire me in their first year of the program, have done some extraordinary things, and they continue their playoff push. We're heading into concert season, we begin with our first musical performance tomorrow night, and then the celebrations just continue. We have a Y symposium on Wednesday, we have a science research symposium happening, we have so many other middle-school performing arts, performing music groups that are going to be taking the stage in the coming weeks, just a really, really exciting time in our school district. So we thank you for your continued support, we thank you for coming out to fill the auditoriums because our students deserve to play in front of a full auditorium. Whatever their musical instrument is, they deserve to play in front of a full auditorium. Our students deserve to play in front of full stands on the athletic fields, and we just thank our community for their unwavering support and just ongoing commitment to our children. So with that said, I appreciate the time to share these updates and turn it back over to you.
Thank you. We're going to go on to board action items. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the April 29, 2024 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And can I have a motion to approve the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association's ratification of their 24-25 budget and the slate of 24-25 officers and members of the Board of Directors?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel, a motion to approve the personnel resolutions A through C as stated below?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personal agenda, a motion upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion that the following be approved. We have certified personnel appointments, other compensation extraduty, the middle school summer school program, the K-5 summer program, coaches and co-curricular appointments. We have two of them, a 23-24 in retro and then a 24-25 unpaid leave of absence, resignation for the purpose of retirement, additional resignations, and under classified personnel. We have civil service appointments, permanent appointments after civil service probation, and additions to the substitute list and unpaid leave of absence.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Business athletic mergers. Resolved that the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District approves the following athletic mergers for the 24-25 school year as per their merger applications. We have the girls varsity swim and dive team with Somers, the boys varsity swim and dive team with Somers, the girls varsity gymnastics with Somers, Croton-Harmon, Henrik-Hudson's, John J. Cross River, Austining and Pauling, and we have varsity modified ice hockey with Brewster-Somers and North Salem.
So moved.
Discussion, Ron, do these kids have anybody to play after they merge seven school districts into one?
Yeah, they do, and it's terrific that individually, we're not able to offer, we just don't have the enrollment numbers to offer the programs individually. So great cooperation with our friends in Somers and Croton-Harmon and Hendrick Hudson and the other districts to give students opportunities. There are such specific events that the children participate in, so no one school has the ability to field a team in all of the events, but we bring our collective skills together to form a pretty talented team.
And we, these are all repeats, we've done them in prior years?
Correct, yes, every one of these is a repeat.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be it resolved that the board hereby authorizes Shaw, Pearl, Semeney, and Lambert to defend the district in the case of KSQ Architects PC, DBA KSQ Design versus Yorktown Central School District pursuant to the terms of the district's 23-24 school year retainer agreement with the law firm.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Budget transfers, a motion to approve the budget transfers that are listed below?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Be resolved that the Board of Education of the Yorktown Central School District hereby appoints the firm of Keenan Bean PC a special counsel to the district to provide legal advice, consultation, and other legal services regarding discrete issues relating to students, staff, and or operations of the school district per the retainer agreement.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Curriculum, a motion to approve the 23-24 Yorktown Congress of Teachers professional improvement proposal as slated below, and a motion to approve the 24-25 Yorktown Congress of Teachers professional improvement program proposals as slated below.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Personnel, a motion to arrange the placements as of May 13th, 2024?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to approve the attached amendments to the following vendor agreements for the 23-24 school year. Amendment number one, agreement with Diana Morgan, and amendment number two, the vendor agreement with Westchester-Putnam Thera Team.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Gifts, grants, and donations, a motion to accept with gratitude the following gifts, grants, and donations. And Mohansick, $51 for second-grade excursions to the Yorktown Stage, Bear Mountain, and Westmoreland Sanctuary for the Mohansick PTA, and at Mildredy Strang Middle School, $1,200 for social emotional learning programs from the Lions Club of Yorktown Charities, Inc., and $1,936.64 from the Black Bond Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life employee, Tiara Mendez Match Program.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Reptile board comments, Peter.
Just another great night. It's always great to see the development of a process to its fruition, so, and just congratulations to all the tenure recipients.
Elena?
I second that. Just congratulations to everyone, and it was really nice to see all the colleagues and cheering them on and the families. It was a special night.
Mike?
Yeah, congratulations to all our tenure recipients. Always a fun night kicking off our celebration month, as we like to say. And I'd like to give a special shout out to our communications assistant, Brian Marshausser, who received permanent appointment tonight after completing his probationary period. He's a huge asset to the district, and we're happy to have you aboard.
Rashmi?
Yes, congratulations to all the tenure recipients and to Brian. We don't know what we would do without you. I don't know how we did, you know, fine before you came about, so, you know, we're very glad to have you. And this is also our last meeting before the budget votes. I hope the community will come and support the budget. It's a very, I know our administration worked really hard on it, so we're well below the tax cap, so again, I do hope the community will come support us on the 21st.
Cheryl?
Big congratulations to our tenure recipients tonight. One of the things I always think about is how, I know we chose you when you went through an interview when you were first hired here, but you also chose us. There are many other schools in Westchester, there are so many schools in the city that are equally accessible to our, you know, many of our schools in Westchester and Putnam, but you chose us and you chose to come here, and we are clearly benefiting from all of the experience and the knowledge and the heartfelt dedication to this profession. So thank you to all of those teachers who were tenured tonight, and thank you, Brian, because I agree with Rashmi, I don't even know what we could have done without you. You are all over social media, you make us shine, and I can't tell you how proud I am when I see all of those pictures up, so thank you so much for all you do.
Lisa?
So congratulations to everyone tonight, including Brian. You know, Dr. Hatter said when he was speaking earlier that not everyone gets tenure, and I think that's especially true here in Yorktown because we demand excellence and it's a rigorous process. So to be awarded tenure or permanent position here in Yorktown, it really does speak to the talents that you bring, so thank you.
Yeah, I agree with everybody. Congratulations to all the tenure recipients, congratulations, Brian. It's a wonderful night. I also want to thank the middle school jazz band. They were amazing, and it was so nice. We normally get to hear the high school in here, but to hear the middle school and to see where they are coming from to go to the high school, that was just amazing. So thank you for bringing them to us, we appreciate that. And again, like Rashmi said, please come vote. It's very important that you vote. Voting is expected. We really want you to come vote on Tuesday, so please do that. We are up to public comment number two. Anybody? Nope. So can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good night, everyone.
Good night.